My name is Jen Daniels. I'm the mayor for the town of Gilbert, and I'm super excited because I have an awesome team. We have our vice mayor, Eddie Cook. And then we have councilmember Anderson Taylor Yentes and Peterson. And we also have councilmember Jordan Ray, but he has to call in tonight. He's out of town for work. So we're giving him a little hall pass. Where's our teachers? In the room? I think that's where we can do that. Awesome. We actually have a really special presentation for you right at the beginning. And I know it's a little crowded in here, so I do see like a couple of seats in there. I don't know if those are being saved, but we like... Oh, they are. Okay, never mind. We'll just squish in and we'll make some changes, and we're pretty casual as a group, so you guys will know exactly what you're doing. I'm passing this mic over to councilmember Peterson to introduce our special presentation.
Thank you, mayor. This evening, since we're here to celebrate students, we like to do this once a year with our student ambassadors for our Gilbert Sister Cities program. We each year send two students to Northern Ireland and two to China because we have sister cities in LaShawn, China, and Antrim-Newton-Abe-Burrow in Northern Ireland. I've been lucky enough to visit both, and I love to hear these kids come back and tell the stories of everything that they've learned. And I love to have them come and present on Student of the Month night because all of you work with students, you have kids at home, and you might think that this program would be good for somebody that you know next year. And they'll start accepting applications in the fall of your next school year, so talk to your guidance counselors at that point and see if this is something that you might be interested in. And you might be able to be one of these great students that represented us in one of those countries. Come on down, students. I'll let you introduce yourselves.
Thank you, Ms. Peterson. Hi, my name is Trey.
I'm Nicole.
I'm Kenzie. I went to LaShawn, China last year. And Trey and I went to Antrim-Newton-Abe, Northern Ireland.
So as Ms. Peterson was going over a little bit already, Gilbert Sister Cities is a program that we have been involved in for the last about year, little over. It promotes cultural and business, like integration and growth between the cities of Gilbert and Antrim-Newton-Abe in Northern Ireland and then LaShawn, China. So we'll give it to Kenzie to for the first slide.
Okay, so last year I went, this last summer, I went to LaShawn. And while I was over there, the picture in the upper-left corner, that's the giant Buddha, which is really what LaShawn is known for. Because LaShawn, the name, actually means the city between three rivers, and that's the world's biggest Buddha, and it overlooks the three city, or the three rivers that LaShawn is really known for. So we got to go there. The government ambassadors, they took us to the giant Buddha, and they also took us to the Confucius Temple, which is on the right-hand side. And so that was also really big and another highlight that LaShawn is known for. If you hit the drum, it like brings good luck with grades and like getting into good schools. So that was really fun. We all hit the drum. And then in the lower-left corner, that's the family that I stayed with. And that was probably my favorite part because I got to stay with another family with a student over there who is about 15. And just getting to know her and getting to know her family was really interesting because even though they didn't speak English, it was fun getting to know them and getting to communicate with them through Google Translate and being able to hear about how their life is in China, which is not all that different. It's a lot more similar than you'd expect to how we, you know, have our day-to-day lives here. So that was my experience in China.
So these are a couple of things that we did, me and Nicole did while we were in Ireland. In the top-left-hand corner, it's at a place called Jungle NI. NI stands for Northern Ireland. I didn't know that for so long. What we're doing is something called zorbing. I hadn't heard of this leading up to it, but basically they strap you in a giant rubber ball and roll you down like a hill that's like 100 feet long. It's crazy. Nicole could hear me screaming while I was at the bottom. Let's say that. Anyways, so in the top-right is me steering a ship. In the bottom-left is also the same day. We were involved in this volunteer program where for the day we went and helped disabled people go and sail. So that was really cool. We got to do some awesome sightseeing through that in the Belfast Lock, which that's how they say lake. But yeah, it was really cool. Then also in the bottom-right, that's part of the Jungle NI. Part of that was we were able to, we were able to like walk llamas around. So it's kind of random, but it was really cool. Overall, it was just an amazing experience for me. I learned a lot. I was able to stay with a family who I just grew to love and adore, and I'll actually be traveling back here in a few months, so that's for me. Here's Nicole.
Alrighty. So while we were, while my counterpart, her name was Molly, while she was in Gilbert, we took her everywhere because she was just fascinated with everything around Gilbert besides the heat, because they're not used to that. We went to the Gilbert Historical Museum and toured around there and got to see the history of Gilbert from when it began to modern day. We also went to the Water Tower Park and took pictures and got to tell her the story of the historical downtown. We also, for her 18th birthday, we took her to Topgolf, which was awesome. It was air-conditioned, but it was still outside. She loved it. And we also took her to Santan Mall because everything's cheaper here, and she just loved that part, so. Alrighty. So while, I'm sure the three of us could tell you the same thing, but while this whole trip and getting to show people around my town was awesome, my favorite part of this entire experience was the relationship I formed. Molly from Belfast is part of my family now, and she feels like an Irish sister, and I feel a part of her family. And so I would just encourage everybody here, when they get to their junior year, to apply for Gilbert Sister Cities because you go through this amazing experience that you learn interviewing skills and you learn how to market yourself, and you also, you also get to form friendships with the people that also apply. And if you get, you're lucky enough to get chosen, you get to make lifetime relationships, so.
Thank you.
Aren't those some amazing kids that we have right here in Gilbert? And it's a great program, and like they said, it is, it works as an exchange program, plus we try to build connections for business in other ways with both of those countries at the same time. Thanks for having us do a little presentation. Mayor?
Thank you. That was terrific. I think I want to get my passport ready. That was really cool. So for what you've all come here tonight, we're very grateful, and we love honoring the students that we have in Gilbert. And we're especially grateful for our teachers. They lived through rainy day recess today, too. So those teachers who are here today, I think we said some special prayers, teachers, administrators, those who work in your school, will you please stand so we can recognize you? We love our teachers. Still, the number-one reason people move to Gilbert is for our education system, and we're really fortunate to have so many opportunities. You are diligently doing homework. It looks like spelling words. Can I borrow you for just a second? Will you come on up? Okay, come here. I need some help. So all of the teachers, they spend time nominating your students. And we put all the teachers who nominated someone's name in this bucket, and we have a $25 Sal's gift card for one of those teachers. Will you pick the teacher? It's okay. They all will love you. Don't worry. It doesn't matter if you pick your own teacher or not, right? All right, let's see. Is Mrs. Coty from Bridges Elementary here? Is she here? No? Okay, we'll make sure that she gets this. And whoever the student is that's here for her, will you tell her at school tomorrow that she's going to get a gift card? Oh, I see her student. Okay, you get to tell your teacher that she gets a gift card. Awesome. Okay, thank you. Thanks for your help. Nice work. Go back to spelling. All right. We do this really organized in a really efficient way, and our vice mayor will be the one that reads names, but we do this in three groups. The first group is our elementary school students, whose school starts with either A to I. So that's Ashland Ranch Elementary all the way down to Islands Elementary. If you are our Student Citizen of the Month and you are in that group, will you please come down now? And councilmember Taylor will help you get lined up for your pictures. Inside your bags that the kids are all going to get tonight, there is a gift certificate to Sal's Gilbert Pizza. So we want to make sure that you know what a tremendous community partner that they are. They are wonderful. And if you haven't had pasta on top of pizza, you haven't lived yet, so head over to Sal's because it's really amazing. We also have Lauren here, Lauren Oxford from our digital team. Lauren's going to be taking some great pictures today. Those will be available this evening, both on Tumblr and on Facebook. And so you're welcome to download those high-resolution. You're also welcome to obviously take your own pictures, and when it's your child's time, right down here is the best spot for you. But if you have, if you're stuck somewhere, we'll try to accommodate that, too. All right? Did I cover it all? Was that everything? Okay, we'll get started. Thank you.
All right. From Bridges Elementary, Lucy Davis. And again, parents, you're more than welcome to come up here to the front to take a picture. So just come on down. All right, from Burke Elementary, Ashley Bustos Perez. No, Ashley? Okay. All right, from Carroll Ray Ranch Elementary, McKenna Johnston. I think he, I think he was about ready to blow a bubble there, mayor. From Chaparral Elementary, Haley Morgan. Excuse me, Hallie. From Charlotte Patterson Elementary, Miram Rhodes. From Christ-Greenfield Lutheran, Ruby Hickey. From Coronado Elementary, excuse me, Ruby? Oh. From Gateway Point Elementary, Delilah Cody. Delilah? There is. From Higley Traditional Academy, Zoe Kuna. Zoe? Hey, you know, I'm going to get fired. I know. I was looking for the Y. From Houston Elementary, Nash Gillett.
We know it's a school night, too, so if your child has received their award and you need to scoot out, we totally understand. We'll do a little transition here. Group Two is the rest of our elementary school students, so all of those after I and all the way to Z. Come on down, and we'll do a little transition. It'll open up some seats, too, and we'll start again in just a couple of seconds. So come on down, kids. We need you.
Listen.
All right. Mayor, we're going to have Mesquite Elementary, Ireland O'Connell. From Pioneer Elementary, Mara White. Perfect. Mayor, we also have another Power Ranch Elementary, Bruce Heron. From Settlers Point Elementary, Evan Millili. Look at that smile. From Spectrum Elementary, Bailey Marsh. Hey, mayor, we have another Weinberg Elementary, Eliza Heap. Excuse me, Eliza. Maybe it's Eliza.
Group Three is all of our junior high and high school students, so come on down.
All right. Last name?
Vanessa Tepesku. Tepesku? I looked at it wrong the first time. I think it's Tepesku. We'll ask her, though.
I think it's Tepesku.
They're very willing to tell us what we're on.
This is a lucky call. I asked her, I said, you need to give me like advanced, the list, so I can review this. Well, phonetically put it out. Do you want me to help you with my daughter's name?
Which one is it?
It's McLaren Orchard.
McLaren Orchard?
McLaren Orchard.
Like the car?
Like the car, but spelled differently.
That's exactly what I thought it was.
Okay, good. Because it gets really butchered.
Okay, we're not going to butcher it.
Okay, good, thank you.
But you can help me with another name. I have another name you could tell me.
Remonowski.
Remonowski. Very good.
The first one is Tepesku. I just asked you.
All right. And mayor, we have another student from Gilbert Classical Academy, Samantha Muro. From Gilbert High School, Mackenzie Trilio. From Gilbert High School, Mackenzie Trillo. Trillo, okay. Just added another. From Greenfield Junior High School, Spencer White. Oh my, that's...
Sharkfish man in a suit and tie.
That's fantastic. From Higley High School, Nathan Grandy. From Leading Edge Early College, Jonathan Leavon. Leading Edge Academy Early College, Eliana Munoz. From Eskeet Junior High, Edward J. Russell IV.
No Edward J. Russell?
No. From Payne Junior High, Hayden Hurley. From Perry High School, J.C. Romanowski. From Salsaman Middle School, Ryan Carbone. And from South Valley Junior High, Alicia Stacy.
Thank you so much for being here tonight, there's just a couple weeks till the quarter's over, you're halfway through the semester, thanks for your hard work, and we hope to see you again, thanks. Our, thank you, our council meeting will begin in just about a minute.
Thanks for the challenge, I'm not going to speak tonight, but I love that, I love that challenge.
All right, we'll make this the 30-second warning to start our council meeting and invite our scouts that are present to come forward. Scouts, Councilmember Yentes is there, and she will line you up.
We just want to line up right here in a row. Yeah, this is fine. They'll move for the picture, so, all right, what troop are you from? 290? 290, all right.
If those council members could please stand, and we'll ask Councilmember Yentes to do some intros.
Yours is wrong, it's not 809. Oh, okay, 290. You're doing the pledge? Great.
All right, well, we have the honor of introducing Troop 290, and I'm going to actually give you guys each the microphone.
Hold on one second, Amy, I see more scouts, do those scouts want to come on down, we're starting our meeting? Hurry scouts, come on down, we need you. Look, these are good-looking Cubs and WeBlows, they see them. Are we all from 290?
No, this group's 522.
Okay, great, well, I'll have you guys... Amy. Start with the pledge? Okay. Yes.
All right, well, I think we'll pick our first volunteer right here, would you mind leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance? All right, thank you, what's your name?
Isaac.
Isaac, all right, Isaac, take it away. The flag's just right over there.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, unity, and justice for all.
We might just invite Isaac to do the pledge every time. So we have a couple troop numbers here, I think, we'll just go down the line, and if you want to introduce yourself, what troop you're from, and your rank, and since it was such a rainy day, maybe answer the question, what is your favorite thing to do on a rainy day? So we'll start here.
I'll let the kids go. Say your name and your troop.
This is Isaac, what troop are you from, Isaac?
522.
And what's your rank?
Tiger.
And what is your favorite thing to do on a rainy afternoon?
Legos.
Me too, all right, thanks, Isaac.
My name is Ever, I'm from PAC 522, and normally on rainy days I'm at school, so we're just stuck inside doing worksheets.
Hi, my name is Drew, and I'm from PAC 522, and my favorite thing to do on a rainy day is play video games.
Hi, my name is Patrick. I am from PAC 522, I am ranked WeBlows 2, and my favorite thing to do on a rainy day is relax.
Hi, my name is Nicholas Anthony Meacham, and I'm PAC 522.
And what's your rank?
Bear.
And his favorite thing to do on a rainy day is giggle a lot.
I'm Sawyer, and I'm from PAC 522, and my rank is WeBlows, and my favorite thing to do on rainy days is just relax.
I'm Andrew Brooks, I come from PAC, or Group 290, I'm a star, and my favorite thing to do on a rainy day is to run around in the rain.
My name is Malachi, and I'm from PAC 290, and I'm ranked Tenderfoot, and my favorite thing to do on a rainy day is play video games.
My name is Travis, I'm rank 1, and I like watching TV on rainy afternoons.
My name is Ty, I'm a Tenderfoot, and I like watching movies on rainy days.
My name's Darren, and I'm a Tenderfoot, and I like to run around in circles and be a crazy person.
My name is Isaac, and I'm from PAC 290, and I'm just a normal child right now, and my favorite thing to do out on a rainy day is play inside with my family.
And our leaders too, you don't get out of this?
I'm Scott with Troop 290, and when it's rainy, I come to town council meetings.
Gerald Mickelson, Troop 290, like to play with grandkids on rainy days.
Andy, I'm the WeBlows Den Leader for PAC 522, and favorite thing to do is, I don't know, read a book, enjoy the quiet rain.
Well, thank you all for being here, we'd like to make a gift of these constitutions, we hope that you crack them open and read them, and enjoy the rest of the council meeting, so thank you for being here. Thank you scouts. Our Vice Mayor Eddie Cook will offer our invocation this evening.
Thank you Mayor, let us bow our heads. I like to recite a very, very famous prayer called the Prayer of St. Francis of Assisi. I like to make a slight modification to the prayer that's appropriate for us. Lord, make us an instrument of your peace, where there is hatred, let us bring love, where there is offense, let us bring pardon, where there is discord, let us bring union, where there is error, let us bring truth, where there is doubt, let us bring faith, where there is despair, let us bring hope, where there is darkness, let us bring your light, where there is sadness, let us bring joy. O Master, let us not seek as much to be consoled as to console, to be understood as to understand, to be loved as to love, for it is in giving that we receive, and it is in self-forgetting that one finds, and it is in parting that one is pardoned, and it is in dying that it is raised to eternal life, amen.
Thank you Councilmember Cook, the clerk will conduct the roll call.
Daniels?
Here.
Vice Mayor Eddie Cook, Councilmember Scott Anderson?
Here.
Councilmember Bridget Peterson?
Here.
Councilmember Jordan Ray?
Here.
Councilmember Jared Taylor?
Here.
Councilmember Amy Yentes?
Here.
Thank you Lisa, appreciate that, we will now move to our presentations, and that'll be done by our Councilmember Peterson, I almost called you Vice Mayor. So I just looked at you and saw.
BMFL, thank you Mayor, I'm happy to serve as liaison to the Gilbert Sister Cities program, and we talked a little bit about it during Student of the Month, and I would like to invite Suzanne Lunt down to the podium to do her annual report on our Gilbert Sister Cities program, and I know she has an audience full of people there, some of our representatives from last year, and some of our newly chosen ambassadors for this coming summer, thanks Suzanne.
Thank you, Bridget, my name is Suzanne Lunt, I'm the President of Gilbert Sister Cities, and before we get started, I'd just like to make the point that Councilmember Yentes is one of our former youth ambassadors from way back in the day, and so you can see that we really pick outstanding kids, and they go on to do really great things. Let me explain a little bit about Gilbert Sister Cities, in 1956, President Eisenhower created Sister Cities International, he envisioned an organization that could be a hub of peace and prosperity by creating bonds between people from different cultures around the world, in other words, Sister Cities is promoting peace through people. As Gilbert Sister Cities builds relationships with Antrim Newton Abbey, Northern Ireland, and Lishan, China, we celebrate and appreciate similarities and differences, we build partnerships that lessen the chance of future conflicts while enriching our own lives, we are bringing the world together, one friendship at a time. I have a slide presentation to show you some of the events that Gilbert Sister Cities has hosted this year, we've been really busy, and so let me just share. Okay, first, these kids look familiar because they just presented about their past summer's experiences, we have Kenzie Taylor and Emma Webster who went to China, and then Nicole Sherman and Trey Lines who went to Northern Ireland, and they've represented Gilbert very well. Next, I'll share some of the events that we've done, we've always been really involved with the Gilbert Global Village Festival, and you can see some familiar faces up here that we're with, and that's always a great event. Next, Gilbert Sister Cities tries to involve itself in humanitarian service, and here's our group from this past summer when we went to Feed My Starving Children, and another service that we do is we also gather books written in English to send to the Lishan, China Public Library, we've built an English section for their library as they're anxious to better their English reading skills there. Okay, this is our All-American BBQ, again, we see some familiar faces here, but this next year, our BBQ will be on July 6th at the Agrotopia Cup House, and we hope that some of you can make it. We host delegations from our Sister Cities throughout the year, and this past fall, we were able to host a Chinese delegation, and we had business and government leaders that came to make connections and learn best practices, and it was so enjoyable to get to know them. And one of our biggest events of the year was we had a large delegation of business and government leaders that came from Antrim Newton Abbey to celebrate 20 years of partnership between our communities, we had business partnerships that were made, best practices were shared, and of course, new friendships were made, we really enjoyed working closely with the town of Gilbert and all of you, and making that a really successful visit, and it was a great experience for all. We had a car wash last fall, and most of our youth ambassador candidates were there, one of our highlights of the year was the Gilbert Days Parade, and we, this was our first year to do a float, so we were really proud of ourselves this year. Okay, we had an Irish Holiday Social, which is an annual event, and if you like Irish stew and shepherd's pie, this is something that you would like to attend. Another thing, this was something new that we added this year, is we had an interview clinic for all of our applicants for the Youth Ambassador Program, and you can see we had some really qualified people who trained our applicants there, they were all associated with the Gilbert Chamber of Commerce, and they did a really great job, and I thought as I listened that, boy, I sure wish that I would have had training like that when I was young. Just a few weeks ago, we had our East-West Gilbert Fest, and this is our biggest fundraiser of the year, we appreciated so many of the town council who were able to come and support that, and we had Gilbert's Dragon Walk that catered, and the Phoenix Wushu Academy who provided our entertainment, and it was a wonderful evening where we set new records for fundraising. And then, I'd like to finally introduce to you our 2019 youth ambassadors who are just selected a little over a week ago, if they could... And then, I'd like to finally introduce to you our 2019 Youth Ambassadors who are just selected a little over a week ago. If they could stand when I call their name. Going to China, we have Jonah Call and Savannah Marshall. And then, going to Northern Ireland, we have Lindsay Giles and Mackenzie Goldman. Thank you. I'd also like to invite our Board Member Valer Jones to stand and give a little wave to us. She's worked so hard to go through all of the Youth Ambassador selection process, hours and hours of time, so thank you. Another person that I would like to thank is Bridget Peterson, who is in nearly every picture of our presentation. She's the liaison from the town council that works with our board and we appreciate her continued help and interest and all of her support, so thank you, Bridget. Gilbert Sister Cities recognizes, celebrates, and magnifies the power of people-to-people interaction. We promote mutual respect, understanding, and cooperation, one individual, one business, one community, and one friendship at a time. Thank you so much for your time and for your continued support. Thank you.
Mayor, you can see why that's such a great program and how they've advanced it even more this year with doing the interview process and teaching the students how to dress for those interviews. I think it's really important stuff that they'll take into their future and maybe become a Councilmember Yentes, right, Amy? Mayor, I joked that this was the Bridget Show tonight. Sorry, seems like we're doing quite a few presentations. This evening, we would like to ask Stacy, I know I got the names wrong. No, I did. Stacy and Daniel Johnson to please join me up here. As you can see, some of us are wearing red because it is Go Red for Women Month and we wanted to take the opportunity to have a proclamation and I'll read some of it for you. Whereas in the United States, heart disease is the number-one killer of women, causing in three deaths each year approximately one woman every 80 seconds. And whereas in Arizona, on average, nearly 16 women die every day from heart disease or stroke each day. Whereas, women have a higher lifetime risk of stroke than men with different heart attack symptoms that are often misunderstood. And whereas, an increase in community awareness is necessary to encourage everyone to go red because 80% of cardiac events can be prevented with education and lifestyle changes. Now therefore, Jen Daniels, Mayor of Town of Gilbert, does hereby proclaim the month of February 2019 as Go Red for Women Month in Gilbert, Arizona, and encourage everyone to be part of the American Heart Association's national movement to end heart disease and stroke in women because it's not just a man's disease. Citizens are encouraged to make a change for better health with physical activity, eating healthy, lowering their blood pressure, and teaching children the importance of staying active and making healthy food choices. People can show their alignment to the cause by registering at www.goredforwomen.org. We'd love to have a photo and I'd love to give you an opportunity to say something. Hi, I'm Stacy Johnson and I brought some red dress pins for council. And, now you have a new one. So, the red dress pin, where is it? You'll recognize, many times, people recognize other shapes. The red dress pin movement has been around for a little bit over 10 years and it's designed to build awareness to this important cause. As you heard, 1 in 3, both men and women, will be impacted by heart disease, so it's a huge, huge, important issue and that's why we're here. Daniel and I are both Go Red Ambassadors, which is an advocacy board that reaches out into the community for education. I think if people thought about it, they could probably name four, five, or six men that have had a heart attack, but probably not a lot of women that they know that have had a heart attack. But I do and I know women that were in their late 30s and early 40s that suffered from heart attacks. This is a very important cause. I encourage everybody to be involved. Thank you for being here.
Thank you and thank you, Councilmember Peterson, for all of your hard work. At this time, we will move to communications from citizens. Vice Mayor, do we have any requests to speak?
Yes, Mayor. We just have one individual, Paul Rodriguez. If you can come up to the front, please state your name and place of residence and you will have two minutes to share with us your thoughts.
Patrick, can you assist? Two minutes. Thank you.
I'm sorry, how much time do I have?
Two minutes.
What happened to the three minutes?
We went over this on Student Citizen of the Month today.
Thank you. Mayor, council, my name is Paul Rodriguez. I live in Gilbert. I'm here to do two things. One, thank all the individuals in Gilbert who look after all the homeless cats that pervade this city. Many of them are involved in trapping those cats and getting them spayed and neutered and then following up by feeding those cats and where possible, giving them shelter in the rain or from the rain. I want to repeat, I got a lot of good feedback when I quoted former President Reagan, so I want to use the minute I have left to quote President Reagan again. 37 words, again thanking volunteers in Gilbert. President Reagan said, "The work of volunteer groups throughout our country represents the very heart and soul of America. They have helped make this the most compassionate, generous, and humane society that ever existed on the face of this earth." I couldn't agree more. But another thing that President Reagan was known for is he had strong conservative credentials, but it didn't prevent him from reaching out to people who didn't necessarily agree with him, but also shared his concern for the welfare of the country. When he came into office, there were a number of issues, and I'm old enough to remember this, that really challenged his philosophy and promises he had made. If I have an opportunity to speak at the next meeting, I'm going to give you a couple of examples of where President Reagan compromised. Thank you both. Thank you all.
Thank you, Paul. At this time, we will move to our consent agenda. Are there any items people have requested to speak on?
Mayor, we're going to pull Agenda Items 4A, 4B, and 13A and good with the other ones.
So, we'll move 13A to the consent.
Yes.
Okay. Is there a motion to go along with 13A?
What I'd like to do is move that we approved. Second.
I'm gonna read it.
Mayor, we approve Agenda Items 4, 5, 6, 7, and 8. And we move Agenda Item 13A to consent. Thank you, I forgot. And then, for Agenda Item 13A, move to appoint Eric L. Jeffrey as the interim presiding judge of the Gilbert Municipal Court effective February 25th, 2019, to serve until a permanent presiding judge is appointed. Second.
We have a motion in a second. Please vote. And I believe we have Councilmember Ray on the phone. If you can vote by acclamation.
Yeah.
That motion carries with a 7-0 vote. Thank you. That moves us to Agenda Items 4A and 4B. Do you like a presentation by staff?
I mean, I would.
Rocky, this is a pretty exciting opportunity for the town. Can you touch on the highlights?
Yes, Mayor, members of council, thanks for being here tonight. Talked to you about a project we're very excited about. So, what I have for you tonight is a public-private partnership for Gilbert Regional Park. At Gilbert Regional Park, we have 47 acres of high and dry up on the northernmost part of the parcel. We divided those into three different parcels. For tonight, we're talking about Parcel 1, which is 25 acres, and a development agreement we've been negotiating with. An overview of the project, it will be called The Strand at Gilbert. It's a state-of-the-art water sports complex. It would feature a cable wake park, an aqua park, a water surf lagoon, a clubhouse and restaurant, and it'll have a sand beach with activities, swimming areas, and cabanas. Some details about the project, it's approximately a $35 million construction investment. Estimated revenues are between 25 and 36 million annually and a proposed opening of summer 2020. Here's an overview. You can see the northern part. That is what would be called the Surf Lagoon, which will feature waves that riders can actually surf on. There will be a cable system in the southern part to go and do wakeboarding and jumps and things like that. And there's also an obstacle course, a water aqua park course and cabanas, and I'll show you little pictures of those. So, a cable wake park is a cable system that pulls a rider around a body of water. There's all sorts of jumps and activities and trick spots that people can do and it's pretty popular with the wakeboarding community. Next, the Surf Lagoon. The one thing that this Surf Lagoon will be unique is, a lot of people think you might just bob up and down in a wave at other water parks. This would actually create surfable waves. So, we'd be able to actually have surfing out there leading into a sand beach. So, it'd be very unique and very popular. And an aqua park, floating obstacle course on a body of water, fun for all ages. Anybody can participate and it would be a fun family amenity. Other items would be a restaurant and pro shop and the cabanas, we mentioned earlier. And also, with our Arizona climate and the ability to actually control the waves and control the whole parcel, it'd be ideal for hosting local and national tournaments. Deal points for the town, everyone should be aware of. This is coming at no cost to the town. We're not bringing any money to the project. There'll be shared parking of 400 spaces. We've negotiated a discount for Gilbert residents and then we're excited to be able to offer introductory classes, you know, swimming lessons, intro to surfing, and have a contractor model and share revenue for that. The term is 50 years with three 10-year renewal options. We've established maintenance standards, so The Strand at Gilbert would be responsible for maintaining all the buildings, grounds, any improvements they make, equipment fencing, ensuring it's ADA compliant. Financial impact, the agreement is two parts. There's a ground lease. We also refer to it as a minimum annual guarantee. You can see it's about $253,000 annually that we will get. And then, we have a revenue share worked out. Where anything over $2 million in revenue, we get 3%. Based on some calculations, we pegged that between $450,000 to $750,000 annually. That would be on top of the minimum annual guarantee. For an economic impact, this would bring in 180 new jobs and then have a $317 million economic impact. I can ask any questions for you. Also, Eric is very well-versed in water, if you have any questions about that too.
Thank you, Rocky. That is the most attentive I have ever seen Scouts during a presentation, so glad you guys got to see that. You guys are some of the first people to get to see that, so you can tell your friends. All right. Any questions for Rocky from the council? Thank you, Rocky. Any questions for Eric Braun or others? Okay, we'll close that portion and open it up for comments from council. Councilmember Ray, if it's okay, I'll start with you if you'd like to make any comments since you're on the phone.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say thank you to those who've worked so hard on this. It comes tonight before the council for an official vote, but we have been in discussions in executive session and other areas for months and months on this. So, to town staff who've worked so hard on this, thank you and I look forward to supporting this and I really can't wait to tell my kids about it and take them in 2020.
Thank you, Councilmember Ray. Any other comments from council? Councilmember Taylor?
Mayor, thank you. I'm also excited about this and we'll be supporting it tonight. Like each of you, I scrutinize a lot of these deals and excited about some of the points here. You know, with the revenue-sharing opportunities there, the thing that excites me is there's some of that by contract, so we know that that's going to be built into it and the no cost to the taxpayer is very important to me, as you know, and I think all of us. And I think it's exciting to see how this will reduce our cost basis from the other parts. And as we put together, I think this regional park's going to be one of the most creative projects here and this is going to be one of the most exciting elements of that. And so, like Councilmember Ray, definite compliments to the town staff on the hard work of that. I'm excited that there's good support and wish the operators all the best. We've got awesome residents that are going to be very excited about patronizing your facility and learning the wonderful sports that you have there. So, thank you very much for taking a risk on Gilbert. I know they're going to have a lot of great fun out there. Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor, I'm just excited that we can now talk about it finally. Like Councilmember Ray said, we've been talking about this for so long and we haven't been able to say anything outside of exec session, so exciting to see this finally come into fruition. You gentlemen have been working hard with our staff. I appreciate all of our staff and all the work that they've done. Rocky, you seem so cool, calm, and collected, but I know you must be super excited about finally getting this here. So, thank you for everything and we look forward to seeing it in Gilbert.
Just very quickly, many years ago, we were required by the state to become a little bit more proactive in how we managed our water supply. And over the years, people have asked, well, what is the strategy that Gilbert has? And one of those strategies was to use 100% in a reused capacity, our water resources. And to that end, we built several facilities here in town called repairing areas where people have wondered about, why are you putting water back in the ground? It's pretty obvious, we received credit for that from the state and that's where this project now comes into play, is those credits we built up with the state by putting water back into the ground now gives us the opportunity to be more creative and having projects like this come to town, which I'm very happy to support. Thank you, Mayor.
Well, Mayor, thank you very much. And, you know, I actually have two wakeboards behind me for show and tell since I'm a very, very, the Cook family is very large and user of the lakes up north as relates to wakeboarding. And no doubt, you know, water can be used very positively for economic development. We talk about the importance of building community. You know, the South Regional Park, you know, was kind of a vision initially that I was thinking about and now the fruition of that is just, you know, all the little steps are going just really, really well and our community is going to benefit tremendously. But as you know, I'm a little bit biased, unfortunately, as it relates to our drinking water. And that's the hardest part for me because it's, you know, we have two lakes here in our community that uses groundwater for wakeboarding, you know, the ski lakes. And I know we've had many discussions about this and, you know, for me, with the drought issues that we have in Arizona, it's really hard for me to look at this as a good use of drinking water for me. And again, I love the project. I look forward to its success. You know, I'll be a user with my wakeboards and my family. I just have a hard time, for me personally, and for protecting our drinking water supply, that unfortunately, I'm just going to have to say no, but I look forward to their success with that. But thank you.
Thank you. I echo some of my sentiments from my colleagues down there, but since we just had the Sister City presentation, I will say when my sister from Newton Abbey, Northern Ireland, came, it was challenging to find things to do in the middle of July and so I'm sure the students in 2020 will be very excited to have just one more amendy and one more activity to bring their friends and their newfound sister or brother from another country. So, I'm very excited about what you guys will bring to the community.
Thank you, Amy. And I'll sum up my thoughts as well briefly. I'm just thrilled about this opportunity for the town on multiple levels. One, from an economic development standpoint, this is an amenity that does not exist probably anywhere in the Southwest for sure. And so, the fact that the Town of Gilbert really can be a destination for this is going to be incredibly important for us as we move forward. A lot of other cities have built spring training facilities or other types of facilities to have their draw at the cost to taxpayers of 60 or 80 million dollars. We're getting to have our draw through a public-private partnership and through some really smart and incredible business people, so we're grateful for your contributions as we develop this and enter into that partnership, that long-term partnership. I will tell you, I knew that we were with the right partners when they knew how sensitive we were going to be to the water usage. They very much addressed that. we were going to be to the water usage, they very much addressed that, and in fact, are bringing their water rights with them. This is not them using Town of Gilbert water rights or water supply, this is them bringing theirs to us, and we're very grateful for their efforts in understanding how important that is to us. We also did a quick analyzation, did our best really to analyze how much water this is using in comparison to other types of uses, maybe a hotel use or a resort use, something of that nature, and I will tell you, this is much less, this is much less than a golf course, and this is much less than what you might find in a lot of other regions of our state where they're developing hotels and those types of amenities. So I'm just really thrilled that we have this opportunity in the town, and I'm really grateful to some really forward-thinking leaders, Robert Carmona from our parks team, John Kennedy, Rocky Brown, worked, has worked tremendously hard on this. I know Councilmember Cook worked very hard with the county to acquire this property so that we could build a regional park on this site, and I'm really grateful for that, that really vision for our community. We do have, and will continue to have, other opportunities as it relates to public-private partnerships, both on this site and on others. I think this is a great first public-private partnership for our new regional park, so thank you, and I think with that, I will entertain a motion. Please.
Mayor, I move to approve item 4A and 4B as presented in the public documents before us tonight.
Second. Please vote. Councilmember Ray, by acclamation.
Yes.
That motion carries with a 6-1 vote, thank you. Congratulations. Now the real work begins. Isn't that the truth? All right, at this time, we will go to the public hearing items. Agenda item nine has been continued already to the March 21st meeting. Are there any requests to speak on 10, 11, or 12?
10, please.
Yeah, we need to talk about 10, yep.
Okay. We will pull 10. I will open the public hearing on agenda items 11 and 12, and close the public hearing on those agenda items, and entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move we approve agenda items 11 and 12.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, please vote.
Yes.
That motion carries with a 7-0 vote, thank you. I will open the public hearing on agenda item 10, and at this time, turn the rest of the council meeting over to Vice Mayor Cook. I will, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Chris, I know you handed me a document of some modifications, do we want to review that?
I, I had some comments.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I just wanted to, I was trying to help Chris simplify this a little bit, make it very straightforward, but simplified at the same time. If you look at the one that Chris handed out this evening, I'd actually like to modify it just a little bit further. Under item number one, I would like to remove typically twice a month, because I don't think we need to be locked in, it already says as scheduled, and we set those schedules pretty much a year in advance, so we always know when our meetings will be. So on item number one, I would like to remove typically twice a month, and then the statement below number two that says the public shall be given at least 24 hours' notice of any regular meeting, add "and" study sessions to that statement.
So Chris, I know you handed me a document, typically wasn't striked out, is that okay?
Typically should be, yeah.
Typically twice.
Yeah, as Councilmember Peterson said.
All right, and then I know you, instead of the word "and," you had the word "or," does that change based upon Councilmember Peterson's?
It, it could be "and" as well.
For which one, for the public?
On the public meeting, any regular meeting and study session.
And study sessions.
Instead of "or"?
And, and it wouldn't be special, I think Chris might have written "special," it should be "study sessions," because we're just talking about regular meetings and study sessions in this code.
All right, so let me just repeat what the modification will be, that we strike out typically twice a month in section one, and then the line that says, "The public shall be given at least 24 hours' notice of any regular meetings and study sessions." Any other comments from the council? Yes, Councilmember Taylor?
I guess I just want to confirm, so the 24-hour notice, if, if we need to call a special council meeting, that will fall under the definition of regular meetings?
Yes.
Or is that a separate piece of the code?
That's, that's not, actually, there's not a special meeting provision in the code, it would fall under this.
Fall under regulars, as long as it's posted 24 hours prior?
As long as it's posted 24 hours.
Okay, good, I'm good, thank you.
I move to approve with the modifications, is that okay?
I'm going to close.
Oh, sorry, forgot that part.
I will close the public meeting of agenda item 10, and entertain a motion.
Move to approve with the changes that I made here at the dais.
Second.
Second, all those vote, please, in favor?
Yes.
That passes with a 6-0 vote. That takes us to administrative items, agenda item 13. And this is the presentation of the micro-mobility program discussion.
There it is, okay. Thank you. Thank you. Good evening, councilmembers, thank you for having me, Nicole McCarty with the Transportation Planning Department. I'm excited to be here tonight to talk to you about micro-mobility, I was here just a couple weeks ago talking about bike planning, so a lot of transit and a lot of public transportation talk happening in Gilbert, and it's exciting. I wouldn't be up here tonight without the help of, I was chosen to speak before you tonight, but this is an effort from several staff, several team members, so I just want you to know that there's a lot of people behind the scenes who helped us get to this point. To over, to give you an overview of what we're going to talk about tonight, I'm going to first start with the recap of where we left off of the January 22nd study session. I'm going to give you an update as to what's been going on in the micro-mobility industry in the short one month since we've talked about this, a lot has happened. An overview of the key issues, benefits, and concerns that we've already been discussing with you and that staff has continued to analyze. We're going to touch on some pilot program components and some considerations if we move forward with one, and then we do have a staff recommendation at this point, and would be looking to you for some guidance on next steps. So to recap, after the January 22nd study session, staff was asked to continue exploring a pilot program. At that point, we were specifically looking at potentially doing an RFP for a single provider, and to report our findings back to council with a recommendation on a path to move forward. Given all of the recent changes, which I'm going to cover next, we did expand our focus to review three potential paths forward. One would be that single provider RFP pilot program, another would be what we're calling an open pilot program, and that would be an open pilot agreement to any micro-mobility company, and the third would be a complete ban of the micro-mobility devices. And so again, staff will be seeking guidance from council on a recommendation out of those three options. So in one month, a lot has changed locally and nationally. Razor and Lime have pulled out of City of Tempe citing different financial and, and demnification concerns. Ford has announced locally that they are going to introduce their spin scooters to Mesa as their first Arizona rollout city, so we'll probably be seeing those come down into Gilbert because Mesa's our neighbor. And then across the nation, cities are banning and companies are leaving, so there's a lot of change happening across the nation. There's also change happening with what the, the companies are offering, so this bird-to-work program is a new concept where you can actually request a bird to be delivered to your house by 7:00 AM, so it's there and ready for you to go in the morning, so, so it's continuing to evolve, hence why we have kind of expanded our options to give you tonight. So as we discuss it, study session, there are a lot, we heard a lot of factors that are concerning and that we need to address, we've been hearing this from council, we've been seeing this across the nation, and so we kind of group those into buckets, and we, we have this on a, on a scale that is very hard to tip, depending on what your biggest concerns are. And so in no order, we have liability concerns, safety and accessibility concerns, challenges with enforcement, and of course, on the other side, we're also wanting to be the city of the future and, and be open to new technology. We also have the ability to potentially gain some valuable data from these companies operating in our town, and, and we also have to think about that if we don't make a decision, or we make too tough of a decision, we might actually be preempted by state at some point through legislation, which we've, which we've seen happen in the past. And the underlying effect of all this is, is that our public and our residents have spoken through a transportation poll, that they have shown some interest in it. Of course, that was just one poll, and there's a lot more community outreach that, that could be done, but we do know that there is some public desire out there for these and for this technology, so we have to weigh that as well. And so when evaluating the three options compared to those buckets of, of concerns, there are some pros and cons, and there are a lot of boxes checked in the open pilot program, and I want to walk you through that a little bit. In the single provider, we, the ones that aren't checked, that are checked in the open pilot would be adaptability for new technologies. So again, with the single provider, we would lock in on either a bike share or scooter share, we wouldn't have the ability to have both in the town or potentially other types of devices that are out there, other pods and shuttles and other things that are coming out, so it would, it would expand our opportunity. And in terms of best use of police time, which was something we heard at study session, we would have to enforce exclusivity if we were with one provider, so we would have to start kicking everybody else out of town, and so that would, that would put an enforcement burden on us. So I'll go into a little more details on the differences between the open pilot and single provider in the next slide. So with a single provider, the pros would be we would have more, we could have potentially more control and a faster request for coordination and implementation of the project. But again, with an open pilot, we'd have more flexibility to introduce new technologies to the town, we feel that competition could drive better behavior amongst the different companies, we would get exposure to the different technologies that they have to offer, and thus the different data they have to offer. It would be faster implement, implementation potentially, after of course, we would adopt the pilot program and the associated ordinances, it would go fairly quick, and we would not be showing preference to one single company. But there are cons with both as well. With the single provider, again, I mentioned, we'd have to honor the exclusivity, we'd have a loss opportunity for more data and potentially the benefits that come with having that. The company may be willing, less willing to accommodate, and it could be a timely RFP process. And the cons with the open pilot would be additional staff time to manage several agreements and several companies, and, and to keep up with how they were behaving and, and the data that we were getting from them. So this slide has a lot of text, and I'm not going to go through it all, but what, what we wanted to show you is that we've been tracking national trends in pilot programs, a lot of different agencies have put out kind of their guide to how to do a pilot program, this is just one example, but really what we wanted to point out is that all of our concerns could be addressed through a pilot program, but it would take us digging into all of these different elements and setting a metric and setting something in the agreement that we could control. We would be addressing general provisions such as the demnification of the city, we'd of course, address the operations, the timing, the boundaries, the speed limits, there'd be financial considerations for penalty fees for share of revenue, there'd be, of course, community engagement that we would want to, you know, to discuss with the companies, and then the ownership of data and how we would use that data going forward. So behind the scenes, the staff has begun dug into these elements in preparation for the potentially going forward with the pilot program, whether it be a single or an open, just knowing how much work is going to have to go into a program, but these are the type of things that we would be bringing to you in the future. And so at this time, as I mentioned, staff is recommending the open pilot program. We feel that micro-mobility is here to stay, we don't know exactly in what form, it's constantly changing, but it, it will continue to evolve, but we would like to have this open pilot program that we can monitor and, and evolve along with it. This gives us an opportunity to demonstrate a proactive and flexible approach, it's not an approach that a lot of people are taking right now, and so it'd be unique to Gilbert to take this approach. And we can embrace innovation, and we can still structure agreements that protect us and protect our citizens and our resources, and we feel we can accomplish that through the previous slide, without being hopefully too restrictive, but also protecting, protecting our interests. And so next steps would be to initiate a pilot program structure and to complete that and bring it to you as a draft form on March 7th. Building into a bigger project would be to look at an overall micro-mobility strategy for the town, this could be a long-term, one, one or more years, but it's really something that we think is worth taking a step back and looking at in a bigger picture and how it ties into all of our transportation modes, all of our technology innovations that are happening, and, and really, it's just a bigger picture item. And then further, we would continue to evaluate the data and improve upon all of the pilot programs and all the different agreements that we would enter into. So we would, again, come back on March 7th. In between now and then, we, we have been meeting with companies, we've been conducting analysis, we would continue to draft our ordinance and our agreement and bring that forward to you on March 7th with your direction. And so if you have any questions or concerns, I'm here, there's a lot of staff in the audience here, and we'd just love to hear your feedback.
Thank you, Nicole. Let me begin with Councilmember Taylor, and we'll just work our way down this way on your comments or thoughts of what you would like to see.
Couple of things, thank you for the continuing, good information, ongoing good information, I know you've invested a lot of time in this. How long do you think the pilot program would be running?
Councilman Taylor, we, we haven't discussed its specifics, it's, we originally thought that a short-term program would be what, what we would lean towards, however, there's been some discussion in different webinars and different things that we've attended where we've seen some negatives to, to having a set-in date as well, where people are now being in limbo and not knowing exactly what to do after the pilot program ends, and so we kind of saw this potentially as being an open pilot, where we don't have a set-in date, and we just have protections in the pilot that would say we could end it at, at a given time for certain reasons, but that we would just kind of let it evolve naturally, and that we could make modifications along the way. That was kind of our, in our latest discussion, a unique approach, we were thinking about taking to that. But that decision, we could bring to you on March 7th as well with, with a couple different options.
Okay, if, yeah, and I, we probably should give some type of guidance to the, to the businesses, so they know, and here's the window, and what kind of, but I think whatever, whatever we define it as, we should make sure we have good goals in mind, you know, what are we testing for, if we're piloting something, we're trying to prove something and it's a scientific approach, which I do like, I, I like that, and I think I'd lean in the same direction you do with the more open pilot generally. Question for Town Attorney on just the topic of, would, would these transactions be subject to our sales tax? Just, I mean, in essence, it's just another business that people are using, but because it's app-based, how, how if any, do we have a tax capture mechanism? They pay to use these, right?
So Councilman Taylor, so I think as it relates to the pilot project, are you suggesting that we also look at possibly trying to recover some cost during the pilot program?
Well, and maybe, maybe I should back up, I, the idea of revenue sharing bothers me a little bit, frankly, because if we have any other business come in, I, I want to treat them fairly, they need to be treated like every other business. If an insurance company sets up in Gilbert, we're not going to consider them an asset, we're not going to ask for revenue sharing and things like that, so that kind of language bothers me a little bit. We should treat them like every other business, where there's a proper sales transactions and, but if people are writing these, presumably they're paying for the service, and so. So I guess that's what I'm saying is, what, what if any capture, does Nancy have some information on that?
I, Councilmember Taylor, I'm looking up, I did a memo on it in the context of Dockless Bikes, and our tax department advised and kind of analyzed our codes, it'll take me another minute, I'll find it.
No worries, yeah.
And again, back to the original point, as a pilot project, are you suggesting that we also look at, if there's an opportunity to do some cost recovery, since we're using public right of way, are you suggesting in the pilot project that we implement that as well as part of the study?
Um, yes.
Okay, if that's, that's why I wanted to- If that's why I wanted to find out.
Yeah, in the sense, if they're going to be needing the use of public easements for the docks or the charging stations or some things like that, yeah, that's absolutely appropriate, and I think we should have that in there. So thank you, Vice Mayor.
Yeah, thank you for the feedback. So Nicole, if you capture that as part of your items, that part of the pilot project might be where we look at also implementing some type of cost recovery through, you know, one of the model city tax items that it might fit in.
Okay. Thank you for that feedback. We definitely will.
Councilmember Peterson?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Nikki, the question of open pilot, we had met with one of the scooter companies, and we talked about if we were doing a pilot with them, that they would provide us their data and analysis. If we do an open pilot, will the companies be willing to offer their data and analysis to us? I'm not sure that they will. Do you know?
Good question, Councilwoman Peterson. We don't know for sure, but we do know that there are some cities around the nation that have agreements with individual companies and are collecting data. It might not be in the same, exact same nature that we're proposing, but I do think that there would be enough incentive for them to do that. Of course, within those concerns, there are going to be, within the long list of concerns, there are going to be items that the city is not going to be willing to budge on in terms of our liability. We might be able to negotiate fees and those sort of things, but in terms of indemnification liability, it might be some things that do push some of the companies out, just like we're seeing in other cities. So I don't know if that might be one of them, but we are trying to have open discussions with the companies moving forward because our goal, if we want them here and we want the program, our goal wouldn't be to create a program that would shut them out. And so we would definitely have to have those discussions with them and make sure it's crafted in a way where we could still get data. And the data conversation has been very in-depth with staff into why do we want the data? What are we going to use the data for? Being careful, we don't ask for too much data and making sure we get it in a way that it's usable to us. So we're not looking at just opening the floodgates. Give us any data, and that's a huge win for us. We're really being careful with that piece of it, and that's just one pro and one piece of the puzzle here.
My other question is, you said that you'd be gathering more information before our next meeting when you bring us back some follow-up. Will you be looking at some of the cities that we know are doing this well? Because when Mayor and I met with the scooter company, we had a conversation about a couple of cities, and I think they were both in Texas, that are doing this really well. And so I'd like to hear some of that feedback from them and see what Gilbert can do to be in that realm, because that's what I want people to be saying about us. I don't want to see the headlines that we're seeing in other cities in Arizona. I want to see that Gilbert's doing a great job at this. I want to give a shout out to Nikki and Kyle because they've been at meetings since before. They went to another city meeting to follow transportation issues, and then downtown to Valley Metro with me for about four hours midday today. So I just wanted to give them a shout out for that and still here tonight.
I'm very thankful that you guys don't meet at 7:30 a.m. like Mesa does because that was rough.
Councilmember Anderson?
The only thing that still makes me nervous is the idea of this is going to evolve over And I've mentioned, I mentioned this before, that I think we're being forced into something that I don't know that we're ready to accept yet. You mentioned in the presentation that this is the future. This is what's going to happen. But what I'm concerned with is we're not, we haven't planned. I didn't see anything in what you talked about that gives us a plan on the infrastructure it's going to take, given the survey work that we've done in the town where people are explaining they don't like the current infrastructure for micro mobility. They don't like the bike lanes. They don't like out on the streets. I don't know what it's going to take, but one thing I'd be interested in knowing before, I don't, at this point, I don't know if it's before we do a pilot program or during, you know, the time we're doing the pilot program, but we need to look very closely at the infrastructure and see what's going to be needed. And I think from what Councilmember Peterson's talking about, find the data in the other cities that are doing it. Maybe they've put infrastructure in that's addressing those situations. We need to know that to see what it's going to take to really make this really, as she mentioned, one of the top cities in the state, that we've addressed it truthfully without being forced into a situation just because they've started to appear in our community. So that's one thing I'd encourage, is let's begin looking at that data on what kind of infrastructure, and let's get it plugged in here on what it's going to take to address that in the future.
Thank you, Councilwoman Anderson. If I can add a few points, I went back to this slide just to point out, staff feels the same way in that we wish we could have gone out in front of this and known, but at the same time, it's also, I think we internally do want to kick off that bigger-picture, long-term thinking right away. And so even though this is, it shows a tiered approach, really, that micro mobility strategy needs to start right away and be going in sync with the pilot program would be our mindset and that the pilot program would help us drive that approach. One item I kind of forgot to mention was that with the open pilot, we would have set, we were proposing that we would have set review periods within that where we could analyze how things are going, how things are changing and evolving. That's another unique item that we've come up with that would help us make sure we can kind of checks and balances. And that's, again, to your point, Councilwoman Taylor, if we didn't have an end date, we would at least have some set review periods where we could get in there and make some changes and feel like we're still having some control over what's happening. So our goal is to kind of gain some control back over what has been dropped on us, but also to accept it and try to learn as we go forward. We'd love to hear those cities that you specifically want us to look into, but we are definitely trying to look for the good examples and the good actors out there.
Vice Mayor Cook and Councilwoman Anderson, if I could add on to what Nicole said, absolutely. These commercial aspects of the scooters as well as the cycles, and now there's motorized cycles, and I'm sure there's more that's going to be coming down the road, is something that has happened to our city along with all the cities around the nation, and it would have been nice to have more coordination ahead of that activity taking place. But it's not only the commercial aspects. We're starting to see a proliferation of private ownership of these types of modes of transportation as well. And so it's something that has forced us to have much more in-depth conversation than we were currently having that was focused a lot on cycling and creating for safer cycling opportunities within our community. And it's really about that larger discussion on micro mobility and all the forms of transit that are here now and will be continuing to come. And we believe the data that we can glean from working with these entities that will be operating within our community will help make us, put us in a position for a better informed decision on micro mobility as we do a more broad, in-depth study on this to understand changes we'll want to make to our infrastructure and how we'll want to apply rules and regulations going forward so that people can enjoy these modes of transportation for recreation or for last-mile commuting solutions, but doing it in a safe manner that works for the residents and businesses of Gilbert, Arizona.
Councilmember Yentes?
Yes, thank you, Nicole. I definitely, my preference is the open pilot route. I think, you know, eventually, if we gather some data from that and we decide that it's unwieldy or there's too many providers or whatever the case may be, and switching to an RFP process, I think kind of the best, maybe the best public RFP process you could have is letting all the providers kind of demonstrate what their service is like, and you kind of have the input from, directly from Gilbert residents and constituents. So I do like that approach. I understand the concerns about long-term transportation infrastructure. I do think that's constantly a moving target and hard to define, and as soon as you think you've figured it out, the next technology has come and, you know, demanded us to now rethink it completely again. And so I'm excited about this, and I do look forward to kind of what you guys provide us as, you know, what each provider will be required to, you know, abide by, and we'll take a closer look at that. So, Nicole.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mike?
Can I just follow up one second, please? Nikki, Valerie took all the notes at the meeting that I had with Mayor and the scooter company, so she would have the names of the cities that we were discussing.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Nikki.
Thank you, Councilperson Peterson. My comments are, I'm in the temporary ban category only because all the discussion that we've had here, to me, indicates that we haven't had time to really think through this. And I'm not sure how much staff time is going to be required, Nicole. Do you have an idea? Is this something that's going to be 20% of staff time? Because I think of all the higher priorities that we have in our, with our teams to do so many different projects, what are we talking about here? Because I think I'm with Councilmember Taylor. I would like to put an end date, a start date and an end date, have all of the metrics for measurement in place and decided, and then you start the clock. And then, you know, I appreciate you thinking that this may evolve, but I hopefully you'll be thinking, forward-thinking and saying, you know, we've captured all the things that we need to do to help, you know, make a decision at a later date.
I'm going to see if Patrick wants to answer the staff time question.
Yeah, Vice Mayor, members of the council. I don't know, we've got a good handle on that yet. We've got to scope out what an assessment for micro mobility would take for Gilbert and then what consultants we may need to bring in to help give us some guidance in this area. We did have a lot of discussion about a timeframe placed on a pilot, and we opted against that because we're not sure when we'll have gathered enough data to start making some decisions on making some changes. And so we want to give ourselves the flexibility to do that. But by also having it open, we can also make some decisions on private sector entities that are not complying with the rules or the regulations or with some of the guidance and tweaks we may want to make and make decisions about them individually without stopping the progress and punishing the others that are working with us and complying with guidance we'll provide along the way. But at some point, we will come back to this council with a request, I'm sure, for some private consultant dollars to bring someone in, help guide these efforts, and probably can gain a better understanding of when we'll need to start making some permanent decisions on how we handle this in the near future.
Thank you. Nicole, do you have what you need?
I think I do.
You think you do?
Yes. Yes, thank you for all the feedback. Yes, we're going to continue just doing what we've been doing and provide you as much information and updates along the way as we can. It's an interesting, interesting time right now for transportation, so thank you.
Yeah, thank you for bringing that up, and we look forward to, what'd you say, March?
March 7, right around the corner.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor Cook, if I may. Councilmember Taylor, the answer to your question is, the sale, leasing, rental of personal property is subject to town code tax as well as state law under the TPT tax.
Can I ask a follow-up, Vice Mayor? So I don't know if, are we, do we have a collection mechanism on that currently, or is that something that we should include in the pilot program, is explore something in that space?
Vice Mayor Cook, Councilmember Taylor, my understanding that as of today, when Bird came in, they're not licensed, so my guess is there's no collection occurring at this moment. They've never applied for business license, to my knowledge.
Vice Mayor, if I may, perhaps that could be an item in the pilot that is looked at? Can I just make one other item on, you know, as we look at the pilot, the topic of pilot, I look at one of the slides that was shown up, all the headlines. The question I ask myself is, is it too early for a pilot? Meaning, this industry changing so quickly that we're going to be testing on A and tomorrow it'll be B in our pilot data, you know? Another way to look at this is, right now, there are certain things I think we can pilot, which is the safety element, maybe the tax element, just some of the more foundational items. Maybe there's some other things, but I think we also need to keep in mind, this is a fast-changing industry, and we're going to see new entrances and new products and things like that. So the iterative nature of the pilot doesn't scare me as much, just knowing how quickly this is going to turn over, just to throw that out.
Thank you. Chris, you're good? All right, we'll move on to communications from the town manager.
Vice Mayor Cook, members of the council, thank you. Just want to again echo my appreciation and gratitude to all of the members of Team Gilbert that were involved with that strand project that took about a year and a half. And great work by Robert Carmona, Rocky, Eric Braun from In Our Water Resources Department, and many, many others that worked very hard to work through the various points of that agreement and understand the impact to our community and benefit. And I thought they did an exceptional job in crafting that project, which is going to bring a lot of enjoyment to Gilbert residents and families over the decades. Also, wanted to thank Nicole, and there was a small army of people when we dove into the micro mobility issue and realized just how many different areas and aspects of the town that get touched and covered. Our chief of police, we had members of the legal department there, a very large cross-partmental team to really think through this issue, and we'll continue to work on that. But I appreciate the hard work they've done on this. This is new ground, new territory for all of us. Thank you.
I made an oops. I did. I forgot from updates on boards of commissions from my council.
The Expose canceled because of rain this weekend, and I know that I've seen it all over social media today. Is Robert, is back there? It's not going to be rescheduled, is what I read, so I just thought I'd let everybody know.
Thank you. Okay, communications from council. Any updates from council? No update from the mayor. She decided to leave early. With that, we adjourn the meeting. Thank you.